Well, it's seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And there is a quorum, but Melissa, will you call the roll?
Ginger Riddle?
Here.
Jeanette Levy-Haldeman?
Yeah.
Jerry Geese?
Here.
Nancy McDougal?
Here.
Max Swazo?
Here.
That is a quorum. The first action for us tonight would be to approve the minutes of our last meeting, April 23rd. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? Do you have any comments, changes, corrections? Or would anybody like to make a motion?
Someone.
To approve?
Second.
Got a motion to approve in a second. Could we call a roll?
Ginger Riddle?
Yes.
Jeanette Levy-Haldeman?
Yes.
Brian Ping? Oh, he's not here. Jerry Geese?
Here, yes.
Nancy McDougal?
Upstein.
And Max Swazo.
Okay.
Okay, we approve the minutes, three to two, three to nothing, three to something. Our next business, our new business, our next action is to elect officers. It's May and we have, that's the, in our bylaws, when we elect the chairman and vice chairman. So I'll open the floor to nominations for chairman.
I nominate Jerry Geese.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any other nominations? No other nominations, I'll, we'll call the roll.
Ginger Riddle?
Yes.
Jeanette Levy-Haldeman?
Yes.
Jerry Geese?
Yes.
Nancy McDougal?
Yes.
Max Swazo?
Yes.
I was gonna ask if you were gonna accept the nomination, and apparently you did.
I guess.
Yeah, okay.
I'll open nominations for vice chairman. Brian is currently, I doubt he would object if nobody else wants to nominate themselves or anybody else.
I'll nominate Brian.
You don't show up, you get nominated.
We have a motion in a second to nominate Brian as the vice chairman. Are there any other nominations for vice chairman? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Ginger Riddle? Jeanette Levy-Haldeman?
Yeah.
Jerry Geese?
Yes.
Nancy McDougal?
Yes.
Max Swazo?
Yes.
Okay, we have a chairman and a vice chairman. First case on tonight's agenda, is that, what's wrong?
Nothing, I'm just laughing. We've appointed somebody who's not here, you know.
Well, had he said, I doubt he'll object.
No, I do.
If he does next month.
Last year, yeah, last year he did, yeah, so, sure.
So if he doesn't want it next month, we'll elect somebody else.
Yep, yep.
Everybody, okay. The first case is case 2025 Development 005 Town Hall Final Plat, Town Center Final Plat. This is a replat, a part of Town Center. And it's to enable a developer who happens to be present. Josh has got the drawing on, we, it's a final plat because it's already platted, so we don't need a preliminary plat. It's a replat. So that's why we don't see a preliminary plat. Let's ask the staff to give a quick run-through first, and then if the developer wants to speak, he can.
So this is a little bit more busy final plat than you'll see typically, because right now, this property, I will pull it up here on the staff report. As you can see, we are taking two lots, and we are combining them, and we are vacating Center Drive, right? So this is going to enable development of these, now one, one property, one lot, with a internal access drive, which will provide access to Dr. Riddell's property here, the Dobsky McDonald's property to the east, and then internally to the development that will be, that will be put up here. So going back to the plats, here's the non-commons version. You can see here that the road is being vacated. Well, there's a note down here that says, anything prior, previously recorded on these properties is now null and void. And we are re-establishing lot lines to move on from there. So in order to maintain access, there is a public access, a public access easement that is dedicated on this property, which runs this way, this way, and then up to the northeast here, and then through here, through lots eight, six, and nine.
Is that the thing with the center line?
Yep, yep. And then there's also a superline easement here as well, so. In short, taking two lots, combining them into one, removing the roadway. That will now be all on the developer to maintain and own once this plat is finalized, recorded, and we transfer the deed to the developer. Or sell it to the developer.
It won't be one, he's creating five, five new lots.
Yes, one, creating four, yes, yes. Sorry, my, you're, you're correct, yes. So creating lots five, five, six, seven, sorry, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I can count and I can read. And then there's a tract up here that will be a part of the detention basin there already to the west of Family I Care. Sorry.
And the purpose for this, the individual lots is to be able to develop, to have a different developer, such as a restaurant or something like that?
Correct.
And to be able to own it?
Correct.
So they wouldn't have to come in later and parcel off?
Correct, yep. There's already plan, as you will, as you see in your packet, there's already plans for each one of these lots.
Back up to the first slide, the overview, for the planning commission members. Lot seven is owned by the City of Lansing. 1.03 is owned by Dobsky, as well as 1.02, and that's where he hopes to maybe build another McDonald's. He's the owner of the McDonald's.
But, the developer also has entered into a contract with Mr. Dobsky to sell off 1.03 to combine this.
So this, currently the city and Dobsky's owner, and of course, the developer's gonna purchase it, so they'll be the ones, the developer. And then parcel 1.01 up there, that's that retention pond, and that's of course owned by the City of Lansing.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for the gracious.
Later. Does, if, if the developer wants to speak on the plat, or if you wanna wait and speak when we look at the site plan?
I'll wait until, until we bring up the site plan.
Okay.
Speak to the plat if you wanna.
If there's any questions to. Anybody have any questions about the plat of Josh or the developer? Okay.
I will point out that the recommendation, staff recommends the approval of case DEV 25, or 2025 DEV 005, with the planning commission's acceptance of the reduction of open space requirements. In the, in the staff report, I outlined the process for that, and we are recommending approval with a reduction in.
And do we also have to approve it with the checklist that has to be corrected yet? Are all those items been corrected?
No, we don't have a, we don't have a physical copy. And then the statement of pay taxes, that'll be contingent.
Well, but the road construction, doesn't that all have to be modified? You don't have everything you need at this point, do you?
I have, I have everything I need, I'm recommending approval. We will get hard copies when, when it is approved, and then one. I should have removed item one from that check, from my discussion of the checklist anyway, so that is null and void. Because a prelim has been approved, we are just approving the final.
And we are sending this to the city council for approval. We, we approve prelims, but not finals. So anybody remember what Josh wants in his motion? Anybody wanna make a motion? Josh will help you.
If you wanna make a motion, I would say, I would, I'd move to accept the, I'd move to approve case, or, yeah, approve case DEV 2025 DEV 005 with the reduction of open space requirements.
What he said.
We have a motion in a second to approve this final plat, taking into consideration the reduction of the open space, and send the plat to the city council for approval. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call, would you call a roll then?
Ginger Riddle? Jeanette Levy-Haldeman? Jerry Geese?
Yes.
Nancy McDougal?
Yes.
Max Swazo?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Now we're going to case 2025 DEV 006, which is the site plan for this same piece of property. Josh, you wanna open it up and tell us what you want, show us on the screen?
Sure, so let's bring up the site, the overall site plan. So what you see before, before you is a retail development for an estimated five large tenants, and then what could be a restaurant, what could be a coffee store of some, some variation, and then a small strip center, 8,000 square feet, could be, one could be built out to be multiple tenants there. That depends on what the developer is able to, tenants, the developer is able to, to bring into, into the area. So that's what we see. We have, the developer has a number of leases signed and in hand, not, it is not completely, that list is not completely built out yet. But the city has long marketed this property as a commercial development. I'm sure some of you remember the original town plant, town center plat, and the site plan there when it was still at PUD. And there are a number of conditions. We were, as always, working with the developer and the architect to work on ensuring that this falls into compliance with the UDO. I have them outlined here. I will also pull up another set of conditions. Because in the, this one, I added additional to, I would ask that when you, if you move to approve this, when you move to approve this, you would add these two conditions as well, they're in blue. The approval of this, this site plan will be dependent on the acceptance of the roadway vacation by the Lansing City Council. This, this site plan doesn't work without that, so it's kind of redundant, but wanted to put that in writing. And then access shall be maintained to the Family I Care property, and then also the Dobsky property from the, during the entirety of the construction process. That's not a concern, but just wanted to put that in writing. The developer, Todd, and his crew have been very good about working with the city, with Dr. Riddell, to ensure that access is maintained and kept open, so.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there only one entrance into this, or is there access off K Street?
There are two entrances, both on Mary. So we are vacating with the final plat. We just recommended to vacate the roadway from center all the way up to K Street. So this, the roadway here will go away.
Will be removed, physically removed?
It will be physically removed. There will be an entrance here. The existing curb cut for the roadway will stay and be modified slightly, but will stay there. And then on the western side, there is another access point to allow truck traffic to the backside of the major tenants of this, of this facility, or this development.
So Dr. Riddell's property will only have access through this private road?
Correct.
I noticed he's in the audience, and I'm curious if he has any comments, or I know you must have a letter from him, but is, is, Dr. Riddell, is there? Yes, please.
Hi guys, I'm Jonathan Riddell. So we've been talking with Matt, representative with the developer. We love everything about this. Our only concern was, we're going from a public drive to a private one. Just making sure we had some of those checks in place beforehand. And I think talking to, talking to them, they've been very upfront with everything, so maintenance, all that kinda stuff, upkeep. Some kind of written agreement would also help us out with showing continuity of access during construction. Because that road, I guess at some point will get torn up. Just making sure people have a way to get to our office the whole time that construction's going on. And then I don't know a lot about utilities, water and sewer, and how all that. I think a lot of our electrical stuff comes in from the other side, but I think we do have water and sewer on that side, so just how that stuff's gonna get addressed. So again, we're, we love everything that's happening, but there's just some of those things with going from the public to the private road that we just had questions and kinda wanted to see some stuff that had been thought through, so we don't end up in a position where we're totally dependent on the developer, and if something goes south, we don't have any, we don't have any recourse.
I think we could probably stipulate that an agreement be worked out with the developer and you before, as a condition of the final approval, if we do that. And the developer's nodding, so.
Yeah, they've, they've been great the whole time.
I'm assuming, well, perhaps the road from the north, from K, could stay open until, it would, could be the last thing torn out, actually.
That is above my pay grade. I, I do not know land grading, maybe as I should, so. Okay, so the.
And we are in the position with, with what we do, if we know the game plan ahead of time, it's easy for us to tell patients, hey, your appointment's tomorrow, make sure you come in this way, that's not a problem, if we kinda know the game plan.
Probably, you can't just don't come in from K anyway.
If that's, yeah, so we've got a lot of options, as long as we kinda know what to expect and what to tell people, we're, we don't have a problem with it.
Thank you.
Anything else for me? Thanks, guys.
If the chair doesn't mind, I did outline in the, the open items, there were a number of open items, a number of open comments on the, on the site plan, as I'm sure you saw, if you have any questions about that. I'm here, the developer and the architect, Henry Clover is here as well, to be able to answer any questions, so we are, we will tag team those items.
I'm sure, not sure the developer's name, but what, are you, would you like to?
Todd, you wanna go on?
Yeah. Again, thank you for having me tonight. My name's Todd Menes, and I'm with Driven Assets. We actually entered the city a couple of years ago. We own the Take Five oil change up at Eisenhower, Maine. And so I've been in front of your, or maybe some of you and some other folks previously, as well as the city council. And based on that experience, it was such a positive experience, because I've been doing commercial retail real estate for over 30 years, that coming to this community was so welcoming, that we started talking about, well, what other things might we be able to do in the community? And so we spent, it's been kind of a labor of love the last two years, trying to get to a point where we could come up with a site that worked. We looked up off of Eisenhower over by Dylan's for a while, and couldn't make that site work, so we came back down here. And by the time we got back down here, the apartments were under construction, and suddenly the site was too small. So again, with the team here at the city, just working back and forth, trying to figure out how to make something work. It wasn't my idea, but the idea to vacate the street came up, and then working with Dobsky, who's the, you know, owner of the parcel adjacent, and Jonathan, honestly, with our representative, Matt, were able to come up with a plan that worked. So we've had really good interest, and it's very hard to build in today's world with all the uncertainty around construction costs and everything. But we've got, those first three tenants are in lease, and, which would be the 25,000, the 18,000, and the 8205. And then we've got four or five tenants that are in active discussions with us on the, on the remaining 22,000 feet there to the north. So we're very excited, I've, you know, we've talked a little bit about parking with, with Josh, you know, the, the, the code calls for two and a half, we're at four per thousand, we can't, these retailers, if you go to any shopping center around the city, won't go below four per thousand. I sent over to Josh the other day, one of the tenant's requirements, which is 4.4 per thousand. We're gonna push them in our negotiations down a little bit, but that's the way these, these shopping centers ultimately get designed. And then there is some pretty big landscape buffers, even though we pushed east really hard because of the slope of the site, what that did was, we've been able to maintain kind of a 70 to 80 foot buffer on the north side, which is nice. And then down to the south, kinda maintain that streetscape, which we're gonna bring into the, into the property, and kind of on our outside drive there, put additional sidewalk up to, to the I Center, so we've got just, you know, a nice streetscape along there. So we're excited, it's been a lot of work, but again, the community's really worked with us, which is, I've done a lot of stuff on the west coast, and that was a whole different experience, going through some of that process. And so we're excited about this, and moving it forward. So happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Anybody have any questions, a question?
Yeah, I have a question. What was the reasoning for wanting to not have access on K to, to make it one-way in, basically, and not have that other access to where people could loop around and traffic could flow easier for you?
One is that detention facility that the city owns. We've got to expand that, and so the whole site kind of flows towards that space. So you get into a position where you can't really put that road through. I was also thinking, just personally from the neighborhood perspective, is dumping all that traffic and letting it go north and into that neighborhood was probably not, might, I would think they might not like that. So I think pushing that traffic to where the infrastructure's built with the stoplight, those were the kinda two considerations, was the detention facility, and then just trying to keep people out of that neighborhood.
And where you come out at the bank there, is there gonna be a light there?
Hmm.
Has he looked at that?
Not soon.
You know, when we designed this, we designed this with, with this in mind, and there was no necessity at this time for any additional traffic signaling at this time.
Mike?
They are providing a traffic impact study, just like we require, but, you know, as everyone is aware, we, Town Center was designed anticipating a full build-out in this area.
And Mike, the retention pond is not large enough, is that what you're saying?
The retention pond will need to be expanded. The, or the hydrology study will most likely show that. We haven't, you know, fully reviewed it yet, but, but they're, they're aware, and it just, yeah.
That's not gonna be a problem with the other sites in Town Center, is it? Are those ponds big enough?
No, those other sites don't drain, the.
Not to here, but I mean, if they were developed, would they?
No, everything in Town Center was developed, was designed with regional detention.
Okay.
Yes, that was actually very helpful to have that available, and then just the ability to expand it with what we were doing. But yeah, that, we would've been really stuck if we didn't have that already in place.
I have a question, because I'm a little bit surprised about the private road being completely taken out. And that I'm hearing that there is going to be an access through Dobsky's, as there was built purposely. So how are you actually going to, I guess I can't see that very well on here, I'm having trouble with the business. How are you going to access the I Clinic and places like that? If you take that road out, where does the road come in again?
So Dobsky's here, right? So if he develops like Zach McDonald's, we've given him rights to choose access anywhere along here, and we'll give him an easement. We come out onto this driveway, that then funnels everybody up to Mary Street. This driveway is specifically built to go right into the I Dock.
Okay.
And that has an easement in place, it'll be part of the plat, that will be recorded and be in perpetuity. So that access point, and then we, as the developers, will maintain that.
Okay.
So that won't be a city requirement, it will be the owner, developer requirement, which really gets spread out as a cost between all the tenants that are in this shopping center. And that'll also include sidewalk and weigh-in schedule.
How wide is that, that strip?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty, twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Jeanette, if you can see, so these gray lines here, if you can see the mouse, here and here, that's the existing roadway. So it's being shifted over, that's 28, so probably 15 feet at this point, and then, you know, 30 feet over here to take this roadway. So coming into a T, and then distributing traffic roughly east and west, and moving it, moving this access road closer to the McDonald's property here, or the Dobsky property here, lot three. Because I believe, I think this is, I think this is the property line.
That is the property line.
The small dash line here is the property line, so, does that make sense?
So McDonald's will not have access directly onto Mary Street?
That stays, that stays here. So they will maintain their right-in, right-out here. And then they will, they've also worked with, with Todd to maintain their option of a access out of lot three. So out of, I'm sorry, out of this property, this way, still.
Right.
So.
And that's a requirement with our, our contract with them, to provide them that access. Because that one, that entry points are right-in, right-out right now, so you gotta get out somehow.
Oh, the island's in the way?
Yes.
I have two questions, if you'll expand.
Sure.
The, the, the retail space farthest north, is that on a separate lot than the, the other four?
It is.
So that's, it's, you don't have a tenant, so you're likely to sell that to somebody?
No, no, we will, we'll lease that at some point, but they're, we're more focused on getting the big spokes lined up, right, to drive the, the.
Well, why is it on a separate lot, then?
Because this, this gives us more flexibility in terms of, if that ultimately didn't end up being an 80, maybe it became a restaurant, you could do something there and sell that to a restaurant. But right now, we are in active discussions with several small tenant people who would occupy that building. And then, right now, the way that we're capitalizing this is, we have a institutional owner. He's a good institution that's going to own this portion of the shopping center for a long time, which will be a nice person to have in the, in the community. So we already have them involved in the project, and so they're gonna own this bigger portion after we complete.
All five?
Yes. Yeah.
It's a big institution, then all, you know, the four, yeah, all four, the top one, not fucking.
Yeah. Yeah, the bottom four, the bottom one.
Bottom four.
But you'll maintain the parking lot and everything?
Yeah, it'll have what we call an REA, which will describe, you know, reciprocal access, so everybody can access across the property, parking, shared parking. It'll talk about utilities and access, and then maintenance and upkeep of the shopping center. Because these are national retailers, I've been dealing with them a long time, they will require that this thing looks pristine, because their brand's attached to it as well, so.
Can you give us a timeline, and obviously, you're not gonna tell us any of the potential tenants that you have signed leases with?
Not yet. I mean, I, I'm pretty, I think some people in this might know, but I, you know, it's, it's national retailers that have over 1,000 stores. So these are things that you're going outside the community today to shop, that will now be in, in the community. And our, we're targeting construction start sometime in the fall. Because really, they have very limited windows of when you can deliver them. It's very difficult, they only will take occupancy at certain times of the year. You just can't say, oh, we're done, here's your building, because they push back and say, well, no, we wanna be able to open before school, right? Or we wanna be able to open for the holiday season, and if you give it to us too early or too late, then you hold on to it. So we have a very strict timeline, and so our goal is to get underway in October, and have this thing delivered, and have the tenants in by late summer 2026. It'll take about a year to get it constructed.
Are you going to remove a lot of the soil that is there, because it's really hilly in that area? How is that going to impact also the expansion of the pond? I can see that being quite interesting, seeing as it's rushing off the hill off of the highway.
Yes, it's actually rushing. This, I don't know how much comes off that way, but I know that the way, Henry, you can talk to this a little bit. This is kinda sheet loads to the northwest like this. And this was one of the things, when we first looked at this site and didn't have this road, we were trying to smoosh it over here, and that northern, suddenly that became not a buffer, like a 70-foot kinda grassy buffer, it was a 24-foot tall retaining wall. So you can imagine if those people come out and they just look up at this mass. And so what this allowed us to do was, for the most part, decided to balance, right?
Yeah.
We push soil from up here down and try and balance, because when you have to take site soil off the site, that costs money, right? And so.
And so we've got Line Weaver, who will probably be the the contractor who does the dirt work here, who's local. But yeah, working through that was a big part of this because our cost and to build a 24 foot tall retaining wall is extremely expensive. So so to your question, yes, it's been more about us trying to just kind of soften this site and then flow it into that existing detention.
Todd's doing a really good job, but I'd probably like to explain how it came about. Because the very first site plan that we saw had 75% of the site surrounded by retaining walls. And as he said, they were 24 foot. And it was such an astronomical number, it was a waste of time because you no one could afford it. And we got to give credit to the city they were created. If you go out there and look at it today, you're going to see the road goes down in a little valley. The problem was always getting enough room to get the people up on top of it. Because when you came around and you had to go up, you had an entry drive that went into the site three quarters of the way to even get up on top. So the creative part was to figure out how to get people in and up. So that's why you see the split. But what it also does is that road is going to get filled in. And so if you go there today, you're going on a little bit of a valley and then you pop up to the doctor's site. But if you notice and if you could pan out just a little bit, Joshua. The the beauty of this is is that that road can stay in place and the new road is built around it on the outside. And we've had several discussions with the engineers about making sure that, you know, these people have to still have service. We're going to have to they're usually in the roadway, so we have to get it. But the beauty of this is for the doctor is is that all of that road can be built around and to him before we have to take the road out. And and the other problem was too, is that it is such a long way down. I mean, it if you drive by there and look, it's a mountain on the on the the north side. And the the other beauty of it is is it's automatically given us huge buffers away from the residents because it's like 70 or 80 feet away just to get. And so it's all going to be graded. There is a little bit of retaining wall, but it's only about this high, about my height. It's not a massive 24 footer. The expansion of the detention is is definitely needed. We have a retaining wall over there today, but they, you know, we've questioned whether we're going to need it, but it's going to depend on how much water's needed. But a lot of it was all based on how do we get up to the top of this thing and be able to grade this site to make it make sense? Because if you have to look at it today, it's it's probably wonderful in wintertime with kids sledding. But so but Todd did a wonderful job of explaining everything, so but I just wanted to add that for flavor. And if you have any other questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you.
No, I don't have a question, but as a member of the Lansing Lions Club who cleans that street all the time.
You won't have to do it anymore.
I know. I don't know. I have to find another task for them because now our stretch is not further.
We can put a little sign up for you that you can do it still if you want.
A memorial of what you used to do, right?
In memory of.
Anybody else have questions? This property, a majority of this property is owned by the city and since several commit city council members and the mayor are here, did any of you have any comments?
No, I'm excited for it.
All right.
Yeah. You got any comments?
I agree with what you just said.
The the fun part is is there's a couple that was in my office and because it had been submitted, I could tell them about it. They live just a little bit further down. They're fairly famous, apparently. They do a lot of like hotel remodelings across the country and the world. They went gaga when I told them that this was here because they always have to go down to Legends to shop. And the minute they found out, they I I thought I had they I thought they'd had a christening or something. They were just going nuts, so. So the residents that I've talked to have been very happy about it, so.
And just so you guys know, I I grew up in Kansas City. I live in Colorado today with my four kids, but I went to high school at Cheyenne Mission East and my father was in the military for 22 years in the Navy. So so I have an affinity for this community because I understand, you know, some of the dynamics because I grew up with those dynamics. So it's fun to be actually working on something that I think is going to be something that'll make a little bit of a difference here for the community, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Site plans, I think we approved. They don't go anywhere, right?
Correct.
So our motion would be to approve it, subject to the lists that Josh had on including the two additionals that he has posted that we did not see in the written communication. Anybody want to try a motion?
I move we approve case 2025 DEV 006 with conditions as outlined in the staff report and the amendments eight and nine.
Okay. Excellent.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll.
Ginger Riddle? Jeanette LeBeah Holdeman?
Yes.
Jerry Geese?
Yes.
Nancy McDougal?
Yes.
Mike Swasso?
Yes. Any notices or communications that we need to talk about?
No, sir.
Any staff members have anything they want to add beyond what we're on the agenda? Okay, then I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Well, I do have one question.
I'm sorry.
Um, has there been any discussion with the Dobski, the owners of McDonald's to to actually build a McDonald's after all these years?
We shall see. What what I have understood is that Mr. Dobski did not want to be the first mover. And with all respect to Mr. or Dr. Riddell, that was not exactly the first moving that he wanted. So we shall see if something like this will will spur him on. So we'll see.
Is there any timeline yet for KCKCC?
The last that we heard was opening either fall of '27 or spring of '28. But we are we have not received any communication regarding regarding plans. We've seen concepts. We are. KCKCC is still showing an active interest in the community, though, and so we will we will proceed accordingly.
Have they purchased the property yet?
Not yet. No, we just we split that off. We will we'll get that knocked out here in the next couple of months.
Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.